Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Organizational Meeting of October 21st, 2024. I would call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the singing of our National Anthem.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With flowing hearts we see thee rise, true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our National Anthem and to the Grand Prairie Marketing Department for the images of our great city. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge, the city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Cree, Dene, and Métis people as original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Thank you for that opportunity. Two items of business today on our organizational meeting. Under Reports, I'll go to item 4.1 and turn it over to Ms. Hanson for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, the first item here is the amendment to bylaw C-1299H being the procedure bylaw. And we are recommending that council gives three readings to this amendment. There is no previous direction on this. There was a revision of the organization's service area structure, minor one, and with that, it requires an amendment to Schedule B of Procedure bylaw C-1299. In your package is Schedule B that outlines the changes that were being proposed here and reflects the four committee structure being financial and administrative services, operational services, public and protective services, and investment and strategy services. Within Schedule B, it also provides the authority for the subdivision authority and the development authority under the Operational Services Committee. And with that, I would open for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for your introduction. I will recognize Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, I'll be prepared to do business whenever you're ready.
Okay. Counselor Bressi, did you have a question?
Great, thank you. I'm curious, our current committee structure is we've got three members of council with Mayor Ex officio. The proposal here is that it becomes five, up to five, three to five. Why that change?
The change is put in place to give flexibility for council if they wish to appoint additional members to it. So, the minimum being three and up to a maximum of five, just to allow for that flexibility.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just a quick question then. At what point in time would we get the option, or you get the option, to appoint two or more members to a committee?
Well, currently, the committee structure that I designated was based on previous committee structure, which is three plus mayor.
Thank you.
If council would like to change that, happy to go back and restructure committees.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to move council give first reading to bylaw C-1299H being an amendment to the procedure bylaw.
All right, so that motion is in order. No discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, Mayor Clayton, I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1299H.
That motion is in order. Opportunity for questions for administration, discussion or debate. Recognizing Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm actually going to move an amendment, and I'm going to, I'm going to move that council amend Schedule B to identify that committee shall consist of three members of council. And just to speak to that, I get the desire for flexibility, but philosophically, I don't think that these committees ever should comprise a majority of council and should be able to comprise a majority of council without us revisiting the procedure bylaw. So, I hope that council will support this amendment.
Just to clarify, three plus the ex officio?
Yes, that's my intention.
Thanks. Discussion or debate on the amendment. Seeing none, I'll call the question on the amendment, and I'll wait for a moment for it to get into the scrib. All right, so it's in the scrib as item number five, amending Schedule B to allow three members of council per committee. Call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Moving on to the amended second reading, discussion or debate. Call the question on second reading of bylaw C-1299H. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, Mayor Clayton, I'd like to move council have third reading of bylaw C-1299H at this meeting.
That motion is in order. In order for us to have third reading here today, this must, motion must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. And Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council give third reading to bylaw C-1299H being an amendment to the procedure bylaw.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Recognizing Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just want to speak to this, that I'm going to support this. At the beginning of the term, we had four different areas. We did expand to five. At the time, we felt it was necessary. Just through attrition, we found that there was some efficiencies possibly to be had. So, I, I support this going back to four. We found that we functioned quite well under four different categories. So, making it official just makes sense.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question on third reading. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item 4.2, City Council Calendar Member Appointments for 2024 and 2025. The changes are in your agenda package, and I'll introduce Ms. Hanson for, or I'll turn it to Ms. Hanson for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. At the organizational meeting, two additional items of business here. One is the appointment of council members to standing committees, council committees, and council representatives, and that is presented on page eight and nine of your package. In addition, is the approval of the deputy mayor's schedule from October 21st through to October 20th as presented. The other information that is in your package is the council and standing committees of council meeting schedule for the next year. This one will be brought forward to the November 4th meeting, as all members of council need to be in attendance to pass this one. And so, this is for information for you today, and if there is anything that's coming forward from that, you will have opportunity to address it at the November 4th meeting as well. With that, I would turn it back to Mayor Clayton if there's any questions.
I have a question, actually. Until this, or maybe sort of an observation for my colleagues, until this is passed on November 4th, we will stick with previous appointments to committees.
So, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, the committees and boards can be approved today if, because you do have quorum. It's just the calendar meeting of, that can not be passed unless all members are present.
Perfect.
So, until that time, until that meeting schedule is passed, then you'll notice on today's agenda, regular agenda, there is an item that will ask for council's approval for the next committee meetings and the next council meeting as well.
Perfect. So, we're only going to approve item number one in today's package?
Today, you can approve Today, you can approve item one and item two as well, the deputy mayor appointments.
The regular meeting schedule. Okay. So both items that are in there, we'll come back and do the calendar on the November 4th meeting. Okay, I'll recognize council who's interested in doing business, Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council approve the appointments of council members, the standing committees, council committees, and council representatives as presented, and approve the deputy mayor's schedule from October 21st, 2024 to October 20th, 2025 as presented.
Perfect. That motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion, questions, debate. Seeing no one online or in the room, in the chambers, I'll call the question, please And that carries unanimous. That will adjourn our City Council Organizational Meeting. If you just give us a couple minutes, we'll get set up for our regu, regular council meeting.